Good evening. Today is Tuesday, October 8th. We are here for the Marlborough Public School Committee meeting. I would like to remind everyone that we are actually being recorded and livestreamed by WMCT TV. Having said that, we'll call today's meeting to call to order. And if we could all start by standing so we can do the pledge of allegiance, please. Alrighty. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to presentations. How is everyone today? Alrighty. So let's start. Do you guys have a preference on order or should I just call you up? So we have presentations today by the Marlborough High School Student Advisory Committee. So if you want to state your name and give us your little presentation, that'd be great.
Is it, alright, yeah, okay. Hello, everybody. I am Patrick Havelin and the Senior Student Advisory Committee member. This evening, I would like to talk to you all about the bathroom and e-hall pass situation at Marlborough High School. I would like to first start by expressing my gratitude for the diligent work our high school administrators have done on creating systems to address the issues we have at our school. Administrators work very hard on trying to include student leaders to help get additional perspectives on ways to approach solutions. I am very grateful to have a great administration that works with and for the students in creating solutions to our problems. The e-hall pass is the electronic hall pass system many schools, including Marlborough High School, use to coordinate students leaving the classroom. Students are able to select their destination, whether it be the restroom, the nurse, or guidance counselor, and also put in the class they are currently in. The pass is then submitted and the teacher is able to view the active pass to monitor destinations and durations of the students' trips. The issue in question today is the e-hall pass and bathroom situation. In our school, there was undoubtedly an issue with students looking to use the bathroom pass as a way to cut class or as a way to conceal themselves from doing things that they know they should not. It is sad to say we have to put in procedures like this in place to eliminate these problems, but the fact is, we do. It not only became a concern to the students' education, but also to student safety. I agree that the e-hall pass system is most likely the best system to monitor the making of student passes and the length in time with which students are out of the classroom. The biggest issue with this system is that there is a very limited number of people who can use the restroom in the school at one time. This creates an issue in the classroom where students are sitting on their computers clicking the submit button on their pass praying that a spot opens up. This causes students to not be able to focus on what is going on during a lesson because they have to continuously click in order to make a pass. Another issue that arises with this is that students will just make passes to other places that are not the restroom and yet still go to the restroom. The best case scenario to solve this problem would be to incorporate some sort of queue system that allows students to join an electronic waiting line when making a pass. Sadly, we have yet to find something like this with the e-hall pass application. The next best thing would be to raise the number of students allowed to go to the restroom at one time. After conversing with Dr. Riley and the Student Leadership Council, we believe the best course of action to try and resolve this issue is to increase the number of students allowed to use the restroom at once. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Yes.
Can I ask the clarifier, just, sorry. Just because, over the years, I know that there's been like certain bathrooms that were kind of closed off for certain time periods, again, for safety needs and things like that. What's the situation now around that? Bless you.
Bless you.
Bless you. The situation is still pretty much the same, I would say, along from what I had heard. That one bathroom is open during half the day because we have two bathrooms at Marlborough High School, one on the first floor and one on the second floor for both boys and girls. And one is open for boys and girls usually on the second floor during the first half of the day and on the first floor for the second half of the day, like you had said, to promote safety measures and things like that because we have teachers outside the restroom checking students in.
Yeah, I guess, and that's why I was asking only because, you know, love the idea of raising the numbers as long as we can make sure that there are bathrooms available and then that they can be watched to make sure that people are making good decisions too. So, and that's why I was wondering only because I know that there can be a lot of people in that small room if there's only one available. And, you know, I have to say, when you put it into your own personal perspective, sometimes you need to go to the bathroom. You need to go. You gotta have something available. So I think that that's, you know, I'm glad that you guys are having those conversations so that you can be a part of it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know it was brought up in budget time regarding renovations at the high school to the bathrooms. Are those-
Taylor's topic of last year.
Yeah. But is that on capital improvements? Do we have anything? Has there been any? I know there was a question of whether facilities was going to be able to do it and when, so I don't know if Matt or even the mayor is aware of anything.
Taylor's aware. Can you come to the microphone?
Thank you, Taylor.
Taylor's on top of the bathrooms.
The Student Leadership Council meeting that we had a few weeks ago, he actually, when we were talking about the issue of the bathrooms and the e-hall pass situation, he actually brought up again, like he was talking to me about it, and he is looking into it, like, in working with the necessary people involved for the budget. So.
He meaning Dr. Riley?
Dr. Riley, yes.
Okay.
So, it's definitely, it's in the works.
It's still a conversation.
I think we all can assume it's very expensive. So, it's just terms of like finding the money and the right place to get it from. So, yeah.
Great.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, both of you.
Yeah, thanks, Patrick.
Hadley?
Good evening, school committee and all watching. My name is Hadley Hawes and I'm the junior representative for the Student Advisory Committee. Through this position, I hope to uplift the opinions of my fellow classmates and do my best to help my school. One of the most talked about changes to occur this year is the school's new phone policy. Throughout the school, the changes have sparked intense opinions, but the restrictions have generally created very positive results. As an overview, the new phone rules are as followed. Students are not allowed to have their phones in class at all and are required to put them in pouches on the wall every class unless their teacher has permitted use. Outside of the classroom, students are not allowed to be on their phone in the hallway or the bathroom with the only authorized time of use being in the lunchroom. If a student is caught using their phone in a non-designated time, a teacher is at liberty to take the phone. If there are multiple offenses, the phone is given to the vice principal. While this is a significant change for many students, there has been an extremely positive change throughout the school. Many students have seen a decrease in phone usage on school days and especially during learning hours. I've noticed more attentiveness in my classes as there have been fewer possibilities for distraction. Using myself as an example, I have found that I am more focused in class, have fewer distractions around me, and I reach for my phone less when I am allowed to use it, which is extremely helpful. As well as this, there seems to be a downturn in skipping class or leaving for extended periods of time since there is no longer a way to communicate to other students and make plans. I believe this to be the biggest benefit from the phone rules as it helps more students focus on learning and worries teachers less about where their students are. But with every good thing, there are always a couple negatives. Students have reported not being able to listen to music in classes where it was previously allowed to do so with their teacher's permission. Most students listen to music to help them focus on individual work and filter out distractions. Having the ability as a student might affect a student's concentration. There's also been a worry in not being able to receive emergency contact by family members. I believe these are all valid worries but can be modified to help students. Empowering teachers to make decisions about allowing a student to listen to music or contact their family without the worry of getting reprimanded would be an easy solution. All in all, the phone restrictions that have been implemented have yielded benefits. I believe that if these rules are continued, there will be only positive effects. While there are still some reasonable concerns, I believe there are easy solutions and addressing them will remove any further worries. Thank you for your time and have a great night.
Thank you. Alrighty.
This is good. Thank you for updating us because I know, you know, we've been doing this at the middle school with the middle schoolers with the pouches. And I know there was gonna, there was some pushback from the high school. So, are you hearing equal positive reactions from a lot of your peers?
Yeah, I've definitely only really heard positive effects and, I mean, the only negative is really, oh, I can't text my friends during class. I do believe that yonder pouches should not be thought about at this time just due to the fact that this has yielded such positive benefits.
Yeah.
And the ability to control themselves in class is still very capable.
So are those, I saw, I don't know, on a video or something, on YouTube, there's pouches in the front of the classrooms?
Yes.
Every classroom has them?
Every classroom has access, including the gym and, I believe, cafeteria, just in case, you know, they're needed.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jade Onyango and I am the SAC representative for the class of 2028. Tonight, I plan on talking on the subject of this year's freshman orientation. Last year, Taylor Cronis, the SAC representative of the class of 2027, spoke to you about orientation and how we could make it better for the incoming class. The orientation this year was successful and beneficial overall, but my classmates have made a few suggestions for next year to make it even better. I sent out a survey to my class, asked them how we could improve orientation. This is what their thoughts were. This year's orientation started in the gym. After entering the gym, we got name tags and sat down, and to our surprise, there was a pep rally to get things started. We were greeted by upperclassmen and we played games to help us get to know our classmates. After that, we were split into groups and assigned two link leaders. The link crew was extremely successful and made a big difference for the incoming class. Students said that the link leaders made the transition easier and minimized the nerves on the first day. We got to know our leaders and they talked about their own experiences as students at MHS. The whole personal view and making connections is what made such a positive impact on our class. So I definitely think this program is a great addition to orientation and helped this year's freshmen make connections and feel less intimidated by upperclassmen and high school as a whole. After each classroom headed into its own classroom, in the smaller groups, we did team building games. But many students felt like these games seemed more on the childish side, and by this, I mean the games just weren't enough to hold their attention. One student even said that they were bored and didn't feel engaged the whole time. I got this response from a big portion of students. One student said that when they were asked what could be done to improve orientation, they wanted to play more full-class games and bonding instead of small groups. Another said that they think they could tour us around the school more instead of staying in one spot. Many students agreed with these statements. This information made me realize that in future years, we should spend less time in small groups and more time with the class as a whole. There was some mixed feedback when it came to the games. Some reacted with disinterest while others appreciated the opportunity to get to know a small group. To combat this, I would suggest that we minimize the games and icebreakers done in the small groups and instead spend more time learning about the school. This could potentially mean adding onto the pep rally and maybe including presentations from sports teams or clubs. Based on the data I've gathered in the survey, students liked this idea as well as a more in-depth tour, one that maybe even included meeting some of their teachers. Students say that they wish they got more information about scheduling as well. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Other than that, thank you for your time and have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Nice job, Jade. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you gonna be on the committee to plan next year's freshman orientation?
Yeah, I would love to be a part of helping planning orientation for the next year's incoming class and just taking part in like the scheduling for that.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Taylor Cronis and I am the sophomore rep on SAC. I just want to start off by saying that this is the most that I've ever wrote. It's about like a page and a half long and I know that's not usually the, it's a little longer than the normal amount that we usually present, but this topic is very important to me and I wanted to make sure that I covered everything possible. So. Like I said, my name's Taylor Cronis. I'm the sophomore representative on SAC and I'm really excited for this new year and the changes and all the changes that can be made and all the things that there will be to celebrate over the course of the year. The topic that I'm going to be presenting on tonight is a sensitive topic for some people. I'm going to be speaking about the gun violence in America and how it negatively impacts MHS students. This issue has been important to me since I was old enough to understand the impact guns have on America's schools. I have wanted to speak about and contribute to change, but I did not always know how and I have not always had the platform to do so. As I have been able to hold leadership positions and have been provided a platform, it has become even more important to me to use my voice to contribute to change. The events of September 4th through 10th sparked my decision to present on this. There were three incidents where a gun was brought into a public high school in the span of seven days. Appalachia High School in Barrow County, Georgia, Joppa Town High School in Joppa, Maryland, and Northwest High School in Omaha, Nebraska. This simply is just unacceptable. This is, first, I would like to talk about the results from a Google form that I sent out. I wanted to make sure I maximized the amount of data I collected, so I sent this form out to all four grades because this is an issue that affects all students at MHS, not just specifically sophomores. I received 135 responses over the course of six days. In this survey, I asked three questions. Two of them were yes or no questions and one of them was an open response. The first yes or no question, have you ever felt unsafe or anxious coming to school because of gun violence? 63% of my peers responded yes. The second question, if you are interested in going into education, have you had second thoughts because of gun violence? 81% of my peers responded yes to this question. My inspiration for the second question came from the MAS C Day on the Hill where it was discussed the lack of incentives for young people to want to become teachers. I also want to mention that I ended up gaining 11 more responses after the fact that I, after I began writing my presentation and the numbers did change the majority to, for both the yes or no questions to being no. But I really believe that if I were to gain more responses from more, like a more, more of the school, that these numbers would change again. The last question in the open response was an open response and it was, are you willing to share any thoughts on gun violence in America's schools? This was an optional question and I received 95 responses. There were a few that stuck out to me and I want to share a few of them now. One student said, I don't think children should have to worry about gun violence when just simply trying to pursue an education. Another responded, I work in a daycare center and it's a hard reality to become a teacher who will need to step in front of a shooter if I have to. I always had to learn evacuation drills for myself, but now I'm learning evacuation drills to safely get six to 14-year-old children out of the building. And another one said, I've seen money being spent on putting bulletproof rooms into classrooms that can be easily pulled out in the case of a shooting happening. Why is money being spent on this instead of time being spent on ways to control gun violence? This quote brings me into my next topic. Imagine in America, 15 to 20 years from now, there are schools with advanced technology to be prepared to combat an active shooter, almost as if the school were to lock down like a safe house for a spy agent, rigged with any traps that you could possibly imagine. This school exists, Southwestern High School in Shelbyville, Indiana. They have a security system that costs $400,000. NBC News with Lester Holt did a report on this in February of 2018 where they go into more detail and I'm pretty sure this school still has this system today, so I really encourage you to watch the video because it is very intriguing. And lastly, I want to discuss a few quotes I found from the NEA, the National Educators Association, on gun violence. First, here are some statistics on gun-related deaths in teens. The NEA says the number of children and teens killed by gunfire in the U.S. increased by 50% between 2019 and 2021. They then go on to say that since 2020, the number one cause of death for teens in America are guns. In 2020 alone, 4,300 children died from firearms and many of today's youth have grown up practicing active shooter drills. At MHS and across the district, we practice ALICE. ALICE is an acronym that stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. These steps do not always have to go in this order and can be applied differently depending on the location of the threat. And we are actually going to be having our yearly ALICE drill at MHS within the next few weeks. A piece of data that I found from the American School Shooting Study said that the average age of a school shooter is 16. To add on to this piece of data and connect it back to students at MHS was another quote from the NEA. The NEA said, the solutions may not be simple or easy, but we know they start with two things, common sense gun reform and mental health support. MHS is very lucky to have our guidance department that is so committed to providing supports to students whenever it is needed to help prevent issues like this. This is only a fraction of the information I gathered on this topic. Again, I had a hard time keeping this short because I think all of this information is important, so I want to thank you for listening and for your patience and I hope you all have a good rest of your evening and if you have any questions, I will take them. and if you have any questions, I will take them now.
Thank you. Questions coming?
Not gonna say a question. I'm gonna applaud you personally. I appreciate you speaking up and saying something. Um, it's not an easy topic, whether you're speaking about it or you're listening because I think it's, for most part, a nightmare that you just don't want to ever have to darken your doorstep and you feel really badly about any of the situations that families have had to go through. And I can only pray that we never find ourselves in that situation here. But thank you for speaking up about it.
Thank you.
Ta- Taylor, are there, are, does this conversation come up in school a lot? I mean, I know you sent out the, it seems like you got actually a pretty good response from folks, but do people talk about it? Is this something that kids are really concerned about?
I can speak for myself and I know especially for me feeling unsafe, like, MHS is super safe. Another response I also got from a student was that they, they are, like, it's an issue that they think about often, but they feel safe at school because we have our school resource officer, like many schools do in the area. But, um, it is an issue that I think about all the time. It comes up between me and my, and some of my peers, between me and my friends, between me and my parents. I especially, like, I discuss it a lot with many different people in my life. So I can speak for myself and I think that that is also the same situation for many other people my age.
So, I know that you all have your training regarding ALICE, which is unfortunate. The city actually just had an active shooter training with the fire and police recently with the last two weeks. God forbid we should never have to use it, but our public safety is, did a whole role-play scenario just in case an event like this should happen. So the city is well aware and keep up with that training. I believe Hudson was there as well. Ambulance, paramedics, so all the public safety members were there. So I was able to take part in that and kind of watch, God forbid this tragedy should happen. So we are preparing for it on the city's side just as much as the students are. So it is a reality that unfortunately we have to do, but at least we're taking the correct steps. God forbid this should happen, so we are prepared for that. So I just want to inform all of you that the city is doing their due diligence as well, unfortunately.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Taylor.
Alrighty, tough conversation, but, but needed. Yeah. Alrighty, we are moving on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mayor Christian. I had promised to update the committee monthly on the enrollment, so I included the district enrollment as of October 4th. I also included an updated enrollment today. So in the last, since Friday, we have had five more registrations. So effective today, the total number of students is 4,786 students in the district. And I also updated the elementary class size chart. If you notice, uh, the average numbers ended up about in the same range, but a couple of grade levels lost a few students and a couple have gained. If you look at the overall enrollment, you'll notice that kindergarten is up to, as of today, 433 students. And every elementary class is 400 or more consistent. So, um, it seems that even, although we do not know if that spreading out of the even number of students is going to be the future or if that's just a one-year change. It is very, if you notice, Jarica still has fewer kindergarten students than Kane and Richer, which is very unusual. But they are still approaching 650 students in that group.
This is the smallest freshman class we've had in years.
Yes. Yeah.
No, 199.
We had, we had a larger-than-usual group going to Asabat, yes, yeah. Which was a little bit unexpected, so that's also a number we're going to have to look at. I think that I was talking to another superintendent in the area and similar, their freshman class is very low as well. I also wanted to update the committee that, about Whitcombe School, the 2023-24 Special Olympics Unified Champion School. At the last school committee meeting, I shared that Marlboro High School was recognized as a Special Olympics Unified Champion School. We are pleased to announce that Special Olympics Massachusetts also notified Principal House that Whitcombe School has been declared an official 23-24 Special Olympics Massachusetts Unified Champion School. I've attached the certificate that was sent to Mrs. House. Congratulations, Mrs. House and Whitcombe School. I've also included a draft of my goals for your review and comments. At the next scheduled meeting, I will ask you to accept my goals. If there are any edits, questions, or changes, please contact me prior to the meeting so that I can send out a revision as necessary. I'd like to send it out by the Friday before the meeting. I, finally, I had notified the committee that on September 24th, 2024, Amson notified us that they had submitted a charter amendment request to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The request is to increase student enrollment. According to their application, they are projecting an increase of approximately 20 Marlboro students. Much of the amendment request focuses on the notification that Marlboro's current enrollment cap limit has been increased to 18%. This increase is based solely on MCAS results. All other accountability factors are not considered and in fact, Marlboro Public Schools is not in any status with Department of Education for accountability. We are, need no support or targeted interventions. This is also not the first time Marlboro has been on the increased cap list, but in FY19, Amson did not apply for a charter amendment and we were off that list within a year. So it's just something to keep an eye on. On October 3rd, 2024, the Board of Education notified the four districts, including Marlboro, that the amendment request may be brought to the board no earlier than January 28th, 2025, and no later than February 24th, 2025. The department is also soliciting public comments. Email submissions are preferred. I know that Maynard, I, I believe that Maynard School Committee, Clinton School Committee, and Hudson School Committee have discussed if they wanted to submit comments. I think they're, those are individuals considerations. Didn't know if you wanted to submit your own. The superintendents are also talking about submitting a joint comment. There is also a group of mainly urban districts that are bringing forward based on what the commissioner recently shared to us about the statewide MCAS results and about the impact of COVID on students, particularly underserved populations and the impact to urban districts, which Marlboro is. I believe that even if I do join with the other regional superintendents on a comment, I think that Marlboro and I should send a separate one representing the issues of an urban district. And Mr. Wells has also had a discussion because I know it's not the primary, but the populations are different and we have received Student Opportunity Act funds based on our population and our needs. And that impacts our Chapter 70 funding and that increases the cost per Marlboro student that Amso receives. The reality has been that that increase in population has shifted our population more and has increased the percentage of at-risk students that we have. That being said, we offer more AP courses than Amso does. We also have the ability to have 21 college credits for our dual enrollment courses. So we're very proud of the work and we would not change a thing that we do. But it's a discussion because at some point, with increased reductions in Chapter 70 funds going to Amso from Marlboro, we are still going to have to do what we have to do to educate our students. And so it may have a financial impact.
Thank you. Yes.
Before I go back to what you finished with, I was gonna say, just looking at the class sizes, I mean, if you look at our numbers for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, it is larger classes than we have had over the last number of years for graduating class sizes. So I know obviously a portion of that group may choose to go elsewhere, but still, I'm not sure that our numbers are going to be that large that we will not see more in line with what we've had in the past, just to make sure that we were seeing that.
Yeah.
You know.
Just that ninth grade class is.
Very small in comparison, so I just wanted to make sure we were seeing that too. Yeah, so on the Amso situation, I know personally, I will be writing something. I would be more than happy to join with this group if this group would like to move forward on writing something. I think I had a conversation, was it just today, with Mrs. Matthews relative to these concerns and I know Desi had said that they were going to try and have some interviews with people. I'd be more than happy to be interviewed because prior to me even being on school committee, I can remember when this charter was being discussed and I had gone to some of the open meetings that they had, you know, available. And a big concern that I've always had from day one of the charter being open was that it was supposed to emulate the makeup of the four sending districts, Clinton, Hudson, Maynard, and Marlboro. And I have been watching the numbers of enrollment for the school for years, as you all know painfully, because a number of years ago, there was a consistency of over-enrollment that they continued a year after year after year. And frankly, I really have to say, and this is not a pat on my back, but I think it was because Mr. Bergeron and I really sat down together watching the numbers and got, got after Desi. And finally, their numbers came back in line to meet what the charter expectation was gonna be. My concern about that is about the dollars and meeting the makeup. It's supposed to be a public school that meets the makeup needs and I really want to have some discussions, understanding about the overall supports for special education students of all needs and multi-language support as well, which, as you know, those are major things that public schools have a right and a need to take care of for their overall population. So I'm definitely concerned about those areas. That's something that we've prided ourselves on, making sure that we've been addressing for years. And it's, it's unacceptable to have a public school that does not prioritize taking care of all and I'll underline that. So I definitely hope that we can provide more data for us to discuss. I definitely was looking into the information about the transportation because obviously Marlboro, having the school within our district, we need to take on that cost of providing transportation. Yet, anyone from other communities, there's a transportation cost that brings in money, obviously, to, to help with that. And I personally don't know enough about the rules and regulations, but that definitely was something that was piquing, you know, my insight on wanting to know more about that. So I, I'm really concerned about a rise on that cap because right now, I truly, with the numbers I've been able to pull, they're not meeting the makeup. So, they have not.
I do want to add a couple of things because the charter school rules are set up. They do not have to provide the same special education services that we have. There are certain programs and disabilities that they're not required to provide services for. So those students come to, back to Marlboro Public Schools. That's not an Amso choice, that's just the way that the charter schools are set up. Because of the lottery system, it's also impossible for new arrival to apply and get through the lottery. They just would not be in a district long enough or the city in order to be, to submit an application. So therefore, they are not servicing EL ones and twos or students that are coming with limited or interrupted education from other areas. So those two areas. And then I was looking at the current lotteries and things. They're not required to take any McKinney-Vento students as well because there's a lottery. So that's another piece of it. So we're, it's always going to be different. And since it is, I think we just need to talk about that this is, we're not, we're never gonna be playing on the same field. And like, don't criticize what we're doing. We, we do, we, we are doing a great job educating students and making sure that there are opportunities for all of our students and making sure that we have those advanced classes and that we have pathways. And so that students that want to go directly into a profession are potentially, we are training, we have, we have expanded and we now have an early childhood program, right? Because we want those teachers coming back to us, right? We want them to, to love and stay in Marlboro forever. And so, like, that's fine, like, there's plenty of room for every, all of us. Just don't criticize us and try to attack us at it as well.
The other thing though, that I do need to bring up is that part of the charter was actually shared information and insight and learning. And it was supposed to be on an annual basis, that Amso was supposed to come and bring forth things that they learned from having the opportunity. And to the best of my knowledge and anyone else, tell me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that's ever happened. So, I, I mean, I, I'm all for the opportunity, but I think it needs to follow what was supposed to be set up because they set it up, right? When it was established, they put their parameters forth when they presented their information to Desi. And you need to follow what you've set up as being your, your guardrails, if you've got guardrails. And I don't think they've come once to help, to provide us with insight that they've found to be beneficial, which I'm hoping that they have. I am assuming that they have, but I shouldn't really have to hope and assume. So I would love to have that opportunity to understand what has been, you know, their takeaway of things that they feel that would benefit all of us and all of our students and our community as a whole.
And to piggyback a little bit with the superintendent said that the increase in the per student that we're getting, for them to be getting that additional money that is supposed to be helping our neediest kids, that's not helping, I mean, yes, it helps them to have extra money, but it, that's. but it's, that's intended for the children who need the most help and their kids don't. So I don't, I mean, I don't know if there's a way the state can look at it and say, this is a minimum number, you know, like that we're always going to provide versus something else. And the other part of it too, is they're talking about an increase of 20 Marlboro students because that cap opened up. That 1,000 number, they've been one shy of it before, but didn't ask the state for any enrollment changes at the time. And backed off. I mean, they've been very close before, but they weren't getting money. And that's what scared them back off of it again. I just don't, it's not fair to our kids to lose that money that they should be getting. And as we've said, they never once come here to talk to us about the good things that they offer, which I think they do. I think they offer, there's plenty of great things. I just don't like how they operate. They don't, they don't play in the guardrails, as you just said, Catherine.
I think that sums up everything regarding concerns with AMSA, so.
So I would like to work with you on drafting something.
Okay. Let's move on. Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. So we'll do the assistant superintendent.
Assistant, yes. Assistant Superintendent O'Brien is not here today, so I am going to present her report. Marlboro Public Schools is in the process of submitting our October 1 student data report to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Below is an overview of some of the data highlights in comparison to student data from October 1, 2020. So she's showing a relative stable enrollment from 2020 to 24 of student enrollment. We've been averaging between around the 4,800 to 5,000 range. The significant increases, if you look, multi-language learners in October of 2020, we were at 1,146. October of 2024, we're up to 1,606. So an increase of almost 500 students. And the special education has been pretty stable, a little reduction. Foster care has ranged from seven to, the current rate now is 13, but that can vary through the year. And then McKinney-Vento students, in 2020, we were at 40. And this year, we are starting at 236. And then historical out-of-district placements, if you've been pretty stable, collaboratives, private day residentials, which are currently at zero. But there is also a chart that includes the significant, she highlighted the 630, 24, the McKinney-Vento enrollment totals.
Mrs. Murphy, just for the public, do you want to explain what McKinney-Vento means?
McKinney-Vento, the students that are classified as homeless. So there could be doubled up, they could not have any housing, they could be in an extended shelter. Also, and that would be students that are currently in Marlboro, are, there is a group of students that are specifically listed here that were at one point in the extended stay but are currently living in another city and are being transported back to Marlboro for education. So they are, we're thrilled that they are continuing to be our students.
And McKinney-Vento also covers Marlboro residents who maybe lose their housing and are forced to be in a shelter in another community. They're still our students and we transport them back here for education.
If it's over an hour, then we'll have a meeting to discuss that. But if it's within an hour, we try to arrange the transportation. In reviewing data, there is no significant difference in special education enrollment or in the number of students being homeschooled compared to last year. The total number of students reported as homeless at the start of the school year, 236, is a 39% increase over the number from last October, 144. However, it is a reduction from the number of students identified as homeless at the end of the school year in June, 295. While there was a significant number of kindergartens that were newly enrolled in the state shelter, 26, overall enrollment from the state shelter has been fairly stable during the month of September. We are uncertain about what the influx of families will be throughout the school year depending on the state's process for family extensions. Any questions on that enrollment data or?
I have a question, oh, sorry. A question about the family extensions. So what is the rule now?
We believe that.
The mayor may know.
Do you know?
No, it changes pretty.
Yeah, it seems to change a lot and I.
It does and it, it seems like there are some locations that are being, that are not being extended as much as other extensions, as other locations, right? So we thought it was, they could stay for an additional six weeks after, but, but yes, but there are families that have been in a stable placement for longer. But we have a number of families that have moved on to more permanent housing as well.
It correlates with a job and.
Yeah, if they get a job. Right, 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 right.
Marlboro has just recently showcased how well we.
Place, because we had a lot of jobs. Yeah, for sure.
There has been issues where they have jobs, but then get relocated based upon housing. So there is that issue.
Yes.
Just because they have a job here doesn't mean they will be staying here because of the relocation.
Right. And then as families move on to a more permanent situation, they're back, the state is backfilling with new families, right? There are families on waiting lists for the shelter program.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Assistant Superintendent O'Brien also wanted to provide the district end-of-the-year discipline data for 2022 through 2024 for your review. One note I did want to mention was that, as mentioned, as part of our PBIS, we expanded the amount of staff that could do discipline referrals into our Aspen system in January. And we increased the roles that could do that. One of the things that, one of my questions are, when you put in a discipline referral, you categorize it. I don't know if disciplines are then being closed out in that same category or if they're being changed. So that's one of my wonderings because I've looked at some of this data and we've talked about it and you will say that there's certain categories, but every, but number of different offenses can be counted in the same category. And I will say that my perfect example is vandalism, right? So you could have three incidents in one week. You could have a student write on a desk. You could have, as, I don't want to say how I know this, but you can have things being thrown out a window in, from a classroom. That could be vandalism, coded that way. And then someone could break a window in a bathroom. Those, all three are significantly different, but depending on who's reporting and who's closing it out, it can be. So looking at what the patterns are, we'd have to go looking at the data. And we said, this was just, it showed up in the security portal and you're seeing it first.
So would you say that there's inconsistency with the reporting and based upon who reported it?
There are, have always been inconsistency and that's not unique to Marlboro.
Right.
I was talking to a bunch of superintendents about this the other day and it was, oh, you have that data? We've never had that data. So it is something that everyone is working on at different parts of that journey. We are better at submitting our data. We just don't know, we're going to have to do a review of if everything's categorized the right way. Yes.
So does that mean more categories should probably be implemented or?
Like, I, we don't know and it's also because when you submit into the system, the state has certain categories, like other non-criminal offenses. That includes insubordination, right? So someone's talking back, that would be there. So 282 reports of that for 5,000 students is, I think, a little low. It could be, it could be high. It like, it depends on like what it is that's happening, how serious those incidents are. And we'd have to look at them individually.
Are there always notes with them?
There is always a discipline referral. We'd have to go one by one.
Right, you'd have to go through it. So it sounds, it sounds like an opportunity possibly for PD to go back and kind of, not narrow, but make sure that there's a consistency amongst the reporting, what the interpretation of something is, as you just said.
And I will say before I read what Assistant Superintendent O'Brien said, is that I will say that there are some increases that I am thrilled to see. One of them being the reports of bullying, all right? Because that means that reports are coming in, they're being fully investigated and they're being, and they're findings. So to have an increase to a total of, did I say? Forty-five completed bullying, documented bullying offenses for the 5,000 students. And that's not how many reports, that's how many went through and were documented as. That's a higher number and I'm pleased to see that administrators are doing full investigations and reporting it out. So compared to the 2023, Assistant Superintendent O'Brien saying, there were decreases in instances of student obscene behavior, other criminal offenses, and weapons possessions in the 23-24 school year. In the 23-24 school year, the districts are increases in student offenses for non-sexual harassment, so, which includes bullying, and other non-criminal offenses, disruptive behavior, fighting, insubordination, violation of school rules. So that's a big bucket there. Threat intimidation and vandalism, and also threatening intimidation and vandalism compared to the year before. Most of the increases and decreases in, I just want to, she made a mistake. And reporting can be attributed to incidents reported at the secondary level, grades six through 12. The increased reporting of substantial bullying is at the middle school level. It is consistent with the data shared with the school committee earlier from the Metro West Student Survey. As Dr. Scazza reported at our last meeting, Whitcomb Middle School is adding additional resources to the curriculum around bullying and harassment in response to these reports. School administrators will include this information as a data source to identify areas to target through restorative practices and positive behavior interventions and supports.
So I think after the questions that I had sent you all and you just read off some of the responses, I think it's, it does sound like it'll be helpful for you all to do a deeper dive, to be able to come back to us.
Absolutely.
Because I don't want to make assumptions, I guess. I, when I sent you questions about some of this, I started to go down the path of the assumptions on things and that's not helpful. So I feel like, once you guys have been able to dig in and grab more of the information that, you know, Mrs. Matthews was kind of mentioning, I think it just, it will help us to better understand the levels, vandalism, what's the range. Because otherwise, I could go on a wild goose chase making up things, you know, and I don't feel like that's going to be really helpful. There's some things that I would say, yes, it's concerning-ish, you know? So please come back.
Yes. And I think that, so when you're looking at the data and you're doing wonderings, right? The first thing is, where is vaping showing up? And that, and we all know that that is something that the high school has been really, like, really serious about and really consequencing, right? But I think I know where it's showing up, right? But I think it's showing up in two different places. And so that is what, and it's, it is alarming the way it's showing up.
Yes. And what I kind of started to go back in my mind was when we were doing some of our MTSS meetings and we had some of the outside people come in to help to give us some perspective with their knowledge base. One of the things that I, that hit me was having kind of like the card that everybody needed to use so that if you went down your list and it was vaping, okay. So vaping goes under here. And so everybody that were the administrators that would do that characterization would have that cheat sheet, if you will, so that we could make sure we were coding it all the same way. But as, I think it was Howard Schuster was the person that had said, you know, we need to go ahead and make sure it's consistent so that Earl and Denise and I would all have the same card. So then when we're all doing something, we'd all go, oh, yes. Okay, vaping, it goes here. You know? If we don't have that consistent card, we're going to get, not have correct information, so.
Somehow, I think, more than 53 offenses for vaping.
Yeah.
Or tobacco.
Tools like, yeah, I've seen it.
I have another question. It's, I don't know how to, I don't know the answer. How are we going to tell the difference between an actual increase in offenses versus an increase in reported offenses? Like, for instance, just take bullying, it's, you know, 45 versus 15 last year. Are we saying there really was only 15 last year? Or was, it could have been 40, but maybe only 15 reported? I don't know how you tell the difference.
I think that's my concern as well. Like, this data is great, it's very alarming regarding bullying, but actually, like, what is the advocacy regarding the non-reporting incidents? Again, how do you find that?
Because seeing that number is shocking, but if it's because it's more reported, it's good. But it doesn't look good when you see that number.
Right. So, yeah, with bullying, this is the ones, these are all, oh. Let me look at the, what we looked at before. 16, yeah, these are all the ones that any discipline actions were taken with. When you look at the Department of Education public, it only shows offenses that students were suspended for. So these are official discipline findings for. In the system, the investigations would be, could be in 2,000, honestly, because you're investigating all the time. And the, we all know, 37 each and three-quarters requires that we do the education piece or restorative actions first before we go to like progressive discipline. So these are not just suspensions. These are discipline actions for something that's happened in school.
So the number could be a lot higher.
It could be referrals or investigations or education piece. If you, if you make a, if anyone makes a mistake, so now we have elementary students' mistakes, right? So being documented so that we know what actions we've taken. So of course, if a eight-year-old makes a mistake, you're going to do the education piece. And it's going to. And it's going to be probably saying no, being, you know, breaking a school rule, but it's still something that would be in the system and potentially could be a consequence.
I, I think, back to the, my concern is especially with Whitcomb, with 6th, 7th, and 8th. You know, I know that we're changing the culture, and we sort of adjusted, which was great. But again, I just, I want to know, or what is the push to be more concerned about the non-reporting bullying that's happening?
Yeah.
You know? And to Mr. Gary's point, is this because we're now being more aware of the situation? So that's why the numbers are higher? Because before, we were very lax regarding the reporting of discipline. So I think that's something that we should be focused on, is, which is just as important.
Right.
You know, so.
And that's why, as Dr. Scazza was saying, they're doing the double dose of, like, making sure that everyone knows and, and really going into, like, what is a bullying, and then how to report.
Sure.
For the students as well.
At some point, do you think, could we get a breakdown as to like, what age group we're talking about with some of these offenses? Like, within the bullying, you know, like, the elementary level versus middle school? Because it's all kind of lumped in together.
Yeah.
I would like to believe that some of these are only at the high school level, but we know that that's probably not necessarily the case.
And that was some of the question that I'd asked.
The increase in bullying, yes, of the findings and the consequences are at the middle school.
Correct.
Have been at the middle school.
Yeah, no, but.
Yeah, but how much, yeah, the other, everything.
The other things, too.
Okay. Moving on. Are we good? Okay. Let's tap into some minutes.
Do we want to take them all at the same time? Or do you want them individual?
That would be great.
Okay, motion to accept the minutes of June 25th, 2024, school committee meeting, July 24th, 2024 special meeting, August 27th, school committee meeting, September 10th, school committee meeting, and September 24th, school committee meeting.
There's a motion on the table and seconded to approve the minutes for agenda items 7, A, B, C, D, and E. Questions, comments, or concerns regarding the minutes? Seeing none. All in favor? Motion carries to accept all the minutes that are on the agenda for item number seven. Thank you. All righty, public comment. We are now public comment. You want to please state your name and address, please?
Good evening. Kevin MacGillie, 58 Ridge Road in Marlborough.
Thank you.
First, before I discuss the bullying numbers, just the presentations by the high school students, really incredible. The presentation by Taylor, I know she's not here, but I would tell her, as a parent, the kids are not the only ones who worry about that issue.
Sure.
It's a concern for parents as well. So they're not alone in that. With that said, the reason I want to come tonight was to address the safety data that was just talked about and bullying. As you all know, I have been here before to talk about this, going back to at least 2022. And frankly, the district has been getting this wrong for about a decade now. My opinion.
Sure.
The numbers that were presented tonight, particularly that jump of 15 to 45, for the superintendent to say, "Good to see that number at that number," and I'm paraphrasing, I apologize if I'm not saying that correctly, but that that means that these are now being investigated, that they're being reported and investigated. Begs the question, why weren't they before? It's great that now at the middle school, we're starting some additional bullying prevention work. That's great. Why did it wait two years? You're now two years behind. That's a long time. And you've now got 45 more students confirmed that were bullied that ended up with consequences. Doesn't mean there were 45 kids that were bullied. That means there were 45, according to superintendent, where the case ended up with consequences. Ms. Hennessy, you like to talk about putting the child in the center of the room, and that's who you're making your decisions for. There's 45 more kids in the center of the room that frankly, I don't think need to be there. And honestly, that number is low. We know that's low. You know that's low. The superintendent has said that number is low. Here's a question. There were 45 confirmed that landed the consequences. Okay, how many were actually confirmed beyond that 45? And how many investigations were conducted? That's an easy number. Did the number, the number jump from 15 to 45? Three times the number. Did the number of complaints jump by three? It's a simple question to ask. But yet, here in this room, the committee's not asking those questions. It's great that you, you sent questions to the superintendent to ask, but what were those questions? How does that inform the community? How does that inform parents? You talked at the last meeting when the, I believe somebody from the middle school was here and talked about engaging the parents. You mentioned engaging the parents. Parents have to be engaged. The community has to be engaged. But that's required by your bullying prevention plan. It's not something you should have to ask them to do or say, "This would be great." It's in your plan. It's in the plan that was presented to you just a couple of months ago. Two years ago, I stood here and I asked you all to put together a working group to look at the bullying prevention and intervention plan. A working group. Parents, teachers, public safety, mental health. You didn't do it. We asked again in April, before this was even presented to the committee officially. We asked again. You didn't do it. I had conversations with three of you over the phone, one of whom told me there was not enough time to do it. So now here you are, and you're talking about data. This data, this should be part of an overall discussion. Not, "We're talking a little one week, and a little the next, and a little another week after that." It's time for the committee to really act. Put together a group to work and look at everything. Your bullying prevention plan is required to be updated every two years. At least every two years. Which means, you could do it again for next year. You could say, "You know what? These numbers, there's something, we got to do something better here." You could put together a working group in the next month. This is bullying prevention month. Do it now. Do it at your next meeting. You could establish that group, have people work at it, look at it comprehensively, and come back and make a recommendation early in the new year that you can implement for next year. I'm more than happy to answer any questions, but thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I would comment on that. So I appreciate you coming in and expressing that. Obviously, going through the public school systems and being bullied myself, these numbers are something that is very eye-opening for me personally. So I do take this personally. Obviously, being in this role for about 10 months now, it is something that I've been looking into and, and doing my due diligence by looking at this data and trying to advocate for that. I know I talked to Dr. Scazza about what that curriculum means for Whitcomb. I do take this seriously, and I hear you loud and clear. So I, I want to encourage you to continue bringing this to our attention, although we are all well aware of this. And it is, like I said, very eye-opening. So it's not something that's just going to go away overnight. So I can assure you of that. I don't know if anyone else has something else to say? I think I pretty much summed it up. Yeah, we do not take this lightly, you know? I, I hear firsthand the issues, especially at the, at the middle school. So we unfortunately live it and see it. So thank you for coming in. So we'll move on from that. So if there's any other questions regarding public comment? Any public comment? Going once. Any other public comment? Seeing none. So public comment going twice. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. And last time, public comment? Is there any other public comment? Again, seeing none, so we'll close the public comments. Move forward. Is there any other reports of school committee or subcommittee? Seeing none. Members forum?
I have reviewed the warrant, and I have signed it.
Excellent. Atool, do you have anything today? No?
Next week is Spirit Week at Marlborough High School, so you might see a lot of the cool themes that were picked out, and all the cool dress-ups on the Instagram. MHS Panther Spirit, I believe, is what it's called.
Okay, excellent. Okay. Anything else for members forum? Nope?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn is on the table and sectored. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none.
She did, yeah.
Okay, all in favor of adjourning? We are adjourned at 8:40. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.